Please, uh, can, or, I try.
Sorry. Thank you.
Mrs. Redow.
Here.
Mrs. Bailey.
Here.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Here.
Mr. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Everett.
Here.
Mrs. Zelinski.
Here.
Okay, now we all got practice. Now we can do it.
With the allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and the supreme government for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that was fun. It's kind of the wave up and down. Okay, we're gonna start with the budget hearing. Um. We'll start with the opportunity for public comment. Uh, has been any written testimony?
No.
Any, uh, oral testimony? Any questions for the board? Uh, the budget hearing is an opportunity for members of the community to make comments regarding the proposed budget. Um, we will, uh, take any questions, comments from the public if there are any. Okay. Hearing none. Um. I know that the Board of Administration closed the 2022-2023 budget hearing. Okay. Kathy, please call the vote.
Mrs. Briscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Mrs. Redow.
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey.
Yeah.
Mr. Everett.
Yes.
Mrs. Zelinski.
Okay. Budget hearing has officially been closed. All about thirteen, seventeen seconds. Okay. We will move on. Volunteer communications, public comment. I don't think we have any public comment, so we will move on to MTA.
Good evening, everybody. The MTA would like to thank all of our teachers for the tireless work they've put into making our back-to-school nights a success. Tonight, we would like to recognize a few of our teams. We have our gold status preschool team with us here tonight. Research. Awesome. Research continues to show that much more is going on cognitively, socially, emotionally, and in the language and motor areas of the brain in young children that scientists or education professionals previously knew. How lucky are we to have certified teachers in these preschool rooms with backgrounds in not only general education, but also special education and endorsed in English as a second language? Our preschool programs have built-in services to address the needs of everyone in the class that include our speech-language pathologists, occupational physical therapists, social workers, and classroom paraprofessionals. Young children thrive when they have secure, positive relationships with adults who are knowledgeable about how to support their development and learning. Learning and development for young children is both rapid and cumulative, continuously laying the foundation for later learning. These relationships start with some of our Mokina 159 students in preschool, but all of our students in kindergarten. We have our kindergarten here, uh, team here tonight. Thank you, kindergarten. Our kindergarten team has welcomed back the eighth-grade buddy program, have planned their first field trip this year to the Children's Museum in Oak Lawn for hands-on fun and exploratory learning, and in only a month's time have taught our kindergarteners how to recognize and spell color words, how to listen and say specific sounds that correlate with weather shown, how to read many sight words, and how to count and group objects correctly. All of this while teaching a skill of how to be a student in school for the first time. We know music instruction accelerates brain development in children, particularly in the areas of the brain that are responsible for processing sound, language development, speech perception, reading skills, motor planning and coordination, physiospatial skills, emotion and impulse regulation. We would like to thank our music instructors who are here tonight. MIS students are preparing their songs for our Veterans Day assembly, and MJH seventh and eighth-grade music class students are actively playing the ukulele every day. The sixth-grade music students have learned the basics of music notation and are soon beginning to work on music composition projects. We are very excited to have our first-ever orchestra program that has thirty-six students enrolled from both MIS and MJH. The junior high band students participated in a step-up event at the Lincoln Way Central Homecoming Game last week, where they got to play with the high school band during the pre-game performance. The MJH choir is preparing for their October concert and are looking forward to their trip in November to see the Broadway in Chicago production of Wicked. So, thank you all to the fabulous educators who are here with us tonight.
Hey, thank you, Heather. Um, I'm C. Say, I believe is not here. Um, MEF PTA.
MEF.
MEF here.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Kevin Ost. I'm part of the MEF Group, Mokina Educational Foundation. And I just want to make a couple of quick announcements. We're in a transition period right now. Uh, Lori Cormiller, we want to thank her very much for all the work that she's done over the past five, six, seven years that she's worked as president of MEF. But she has currently stepped down, but she's helping us with the transition, and there is a new person in place. Her name is Jamie Madonia. And, uh, it's, we just happened with the transmission, or transition. She was just voted in this past month. Um. She's out of town this week at a conference and hopes to be at the next school board meeting to meet all you guys and girls. So, um, a second announcement that I would like to make is that we have a new website. Um, it is, uh, if you do the HTTPS forward slash, it's mokina159mef.org. And that is where, uh, we have two new volunteers that are gonna work on the website. And we're gonna keep it updated as much as possible with all the current information and, um, things that are going on with MEF as, as far as that goes. So, uh, again, we're in transition, so, I mean, it's just a shell right now. It has the basic information. So, just give us a little bit of time. Um. You know. Uh, there's one other thing that I would just, and I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask, but we would like to find a way to get onto the school calendars as far as our MEF group for our meeting times, like the PTA, similar to the PTA. Um, and I'm not sure how to do that, and maybe I'm asking in the wrong spot, but, um, as far as that goes. Uh, and right now, we're still working out a few things as far as transition goes. Um, if there are any more requests for funding, um, please contact me. I'll give out my personal info, uh, information right now. My email address is k o o s t ninety-nine at gmail dot com until we can figure out the mailboxes and the security and all that stuff in the meantime. So, if there's new funding requests, um, please contact me, feel free, and, uh, thank you very much for your time.
Kevin. PTA. No. The board. The board have any comments? Okay. Hearing none. We will then move on to next on our agenda, special recognition for the PFA staff. Um. Mokina School District 159 is operated a state-funded preschool for all program for four school years. Last year, the program was reviewed by representatives from the state of Illinois, or from the Illinois State Board of Education. During these monitoring visits, assessors collected evidence on our program using the Early Childhood Environmental Rating Scale and the ISB compliance checklist. Each program site is awarded an Excel rate, um, rating based on its compliance and ECERS scores. Uh, the state assessor determined that Mokina Elementary School has achieved the Gold Circle of Quality. The Gold Circle of Quality recognizes programs which have demonstrated quality on all fifteen PFA standards. The Gold Cir- Circle Programs meet or exceed specific quality benchmarks on learning, environment, instructional quality, and all program administrative standards. Group size, staff-child ratios, staff qualifications, and professional development. The Gold Circle is the highest level of recognition out of four possible categories you can receive. Board of Education would like to recognize and congratulate our preschool for all teachers and assistants for an excellent job that you do on an everyday basis. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is going to be our name, so if you're ready to come up with your guess, creator.
You'd say same as you.
I mean, now that we.
We'd like to thank Emily Per, if I butcher your names, I'm sorry, Per Snack.
Per Snack.
Per Snack. And Sherry Stoppa. Melissa Martin. And prepared professionals, we'd like to thank Gina Blazer. Lynn Terrell. And Karen McCutcheon. And related service providers, we'd like to thank Nicole Stack. Heather Sullivan. Trish Roberts. And Nancy Ruddy. Right here, oh, right here. And our administrative assistant, Judy Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, congratulations again on all the great work that we do. Um, with the list, I just realized that, uh, you know, maybe we should start parents, more people last name Smith. Or, uh, yeah, reading some of my names, um.
Well, now you'd like to be a teacher.
Yes. Yes, I do. Um. Oh, congrats again. We'll move on to information reports. Uh, Dr. Cohen, you're up first.
I'm gonna be spending most of my time in the information report. Um, we're gonna go through the school improvement plans. So, um, pull that presentation up. Getting a little rusty at, uh, using Google Meet. I guess that's a good thing. The school improvement plan process is not one we are required to do, but we do on an annual basis. This is now year two of the process of setting targeted goals for each building to work on based upon data from school report cards, from our Five Essential Survey, or any other local data we feel is important to address. Um, each school picks their own goals and targets to work on. Uh, we ask each school to work on one culture goal and one student achievement goal. And this is in addition to all the other curriculum work that's being done, all of the other work that Dr. Johnson is leading or Seroni is leading. Or, again, we use, we use our, uh, local information to determine, and each building has a seat, uh, a big building leadership team or BLT that'll help set the direction for the school that year. Uh, Mrs. Trolley is out today. She's been feeling under the weather the last few days, so I'm gonna report out a little bit on, uh, the Mokina Elementary School goals. Um, they have two this year. Their culture goal is around collaborative teachers. Um, they found that fifty-nine percent of teachers in the building had never observed each other's classroom in order to get ideas for their own instruction. One of the things we want to do is capitalize on the, the great things that are happening in our classroom, share those good ideas uh, from one room to another. It also helps when we're trying to, uh, problem solve with children, maybe who have particular needs or trying to, trying to figure out what we need to do to help that one kid kind of get, get to the next level. So, one team, uh, meeting per trimester will be designated as an observation opportunity, and then certified staff that complete these, these peer observations will complete the surveys to, uh, give some feedback on the quality of the observation. This is very similar to a goal that took place at, uh, MIS last year, uh, which Mr. McAtee had success with. So, we're looking forward to having those teachers observing each other and they're learning from each other as they perform their craft. Goal two is centered on reading fluency. Um, our ELA, uh, curriculum pro- review process is undergoing, is, is going on right now. We are, have launched the new phonics curriculum, the ninety-five percent curriculum, which I know Dr. Johnson puts a lot in her reports about me. Talked about that a little bit today. Um. And picking a new ELA curriculum and the materials will be on the docket for this year. Um, but dovetailing with the implementation of the new phonics curriculum, reading fluency is going to be a target for us. Um, the goal is to increase the percentage of students who meet or exceed the grade-level benchmark on the Fast Bridge Assessment by ten percent. Now, the, in general, the Fast Bridge Assessment does dovetail nicely in the, in the trend when one goes up the, uh, when the Fast Bridge goes up, the IAR goes up. So, we hope that by focusing on fluency, that will improve not only just the Fast Bridge Assessment, but the IAR scores. Each grade level will be using curriculum-based assessments to determine small groups for tier-two instruction, uh, that will take place during wind time. Each grade level will look at the tier-two progress monitoring data every eight weeks. And as administrators, we're trying to make sure that we help facilitate conversations among teams to ensure that the ninety-five percent program is being implemented with fidelity, that, um, everybody feels comfortable with it, and that, that each classroom is being successful with them. So, that covers the Mokina Elementary School two school improvement goals. I'll entertain any questions at this time, but, uh, Dr. Johnson, or maybe even Mrs. Trolley who joined me, can help us out if you haven't. All right, moving on to Mr. McAtee.
Right, our, uh, first goal, um, is our cultural goal. Last year, we did do collaborative teachers and was very it went over very well. Teachers loved classrooms, you know, success, but that the, the whole feeling building, um, just was so great. The teachers were getting out there, seeing each other, especially after they did just one of them, see. So, we are gonna continue that. Um. But one piece that we are adding, um, on the Five Essential Survey, uh, one of our low areas was, um, collective responsibility. Some of the things that fall under collective responsibility helped maintain discipline in the entire school, not just the classroom, take responsibility for moving the school, be responsible for each other, be responsible for all students. We did well in these areas. We scored well. We're about fifty percent. The categories, um, the highest are nearly all, most. We split about fifty-fifty for most and nearly all. Our BLT team cited that that wasn't good enough, so that's why we're addressing that, um, this year. And the ways that we're gonna be addressing it, um, is by giving our students and our staff an opportunity to interact with each other on a weekly basis. Um, we're gonna continue with our colleague observations, as I said, but it's gonna be more of an interactive observation. So, they're not just gonna sit in there and watch. They're gonna get their next to speak and get to know the kids within that classroom. So, that's gonna help the kids not only identify with their homeroom teacher, but with other teachers coming in as well. So, it'll be another layer of. Um, we're gonna have grade-level teams meeting one. We have seven homerooms that divided into two teams, three and a third, four. They're gonna get together on a monthly basis and do activities like this. So, the teachers get to know the students. So, there'll be even more interaction between the teams. And then, um, once a quarter, we're gonna be doing cross-grade level activities. So, fifth-grade students and fourth-grade students get together. We did this once last year at the end of the school year, and it was great activity. This year, we just will do it. We will be doing it more and more. Um, our PDIS team actually met just this week, and one of the ideas was to create pen pals between fourth and fifth grade, just because they don't know how to write. You know, they, they tax, they, they type, but they don't know how to write a true paper and pencil letter. So, that's one of, gonna be one of the first activities that we do, just teaching the kids how to write. Um. So, that'll be happening. We're also dedicating with our new schedule, we're dedicating one day a week, uh, for our collaboration meetings just for our staff to talk about meeting, social, emotional meetings. You know, how can we better meet those needs of students as well as of teachers. We want everyone to meet from there. Any questions on our first goal? Goal number two, um, is all about writing. And this is based on our IAR data. Um, you know, we have some improvements. Um. And we want to continue working on this. We started this last year. Uh, it's gonna be continuation. I'm sure it's gonna be continuation for many years to come. Um, this year, though, we're expanding it to, instead of just writing in ELA, it's gonna be writing across the curriculum, writing in all content areas. Um. So, our action steps, um, our content teams are currently developing rubrics. Um, our math teams, um, we had an early release this past week, so our math teams are working on rubrics. Our ELA teams are working on rubrics. That's gonna expand into the science and social studies very soon. Um, so, all these rubrics are based on the Common Core standards, and they're all underway. Um, our ELA team is going to, um, collaboratively, collaboratively evaluate writing samples uh, to make sure that we have them seen across the grade levels. Uh, Eureka Math is wonderful. There are built-in writing assignments. Um, we're gonna be more intentional about those writing assignments, um, actually teaching the kids, you know, thinking, if kids write in math, they sentences. We're going to be more intentional about instruction, how to answer a question. Um, you know, certain guidelines and following rubrics. The teachers have already started writing sample answers for that, so they know exactly what the students are gonna go through. Um, and now they started, started the sweep. Um, they're gonna be saving some samples throughout the year, so we can make the progress and see how the kid are doing. Um, the last opportunity, thanks to Dr. Johnson, um, same company, same organization that came last year for keys to beginning literacy, does a keys to content writing. And we're gonna be doing that on some of our early release days, uh, this school year, um, to get our entire staff to participate in those, be the opportunities. Any questions about our letting go?
And they're looking for assistance from their parents with their homework, and they have to write math answers out. Um, any support that you can give to parents, probably to assist to their children themselves? But that would probably be very helpful and cause less stress on families.
I think that's a great idea, and for these first couple of months, they're gonna be writing games together. So, the students will have the template in their notes so that it's, I can share some.
Yeah. We hear that a lot. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Uh, we are essentially just continuing our goals from last year. Um, we have the writing goal, which is great to dovetail nicely with, um, what, uh, we are doing over at MIS. So, uh, we're working on that CER, that claim evidence reasoning, a method of writing in all the content areas as well. Um, we are conducting regular assessments. We've already done our first benchmarking one and, and yet, and last week, I'd say yesterday, last week, uh, the, the staff went through and looked at their first data, first round of data, and then we're going to be doing some of the things, um, the explicit instruction on how to teach in all the different content areas or, or flesh out what claim evidence and reasoning is going to look like. We're gonna be periodically throughout the year measuring that and really using that assessment to drive those instructions. We're also gonna be working on, uh, completing curriculum maps for our content areas throughout the school year, so we have a solid feel of, or, you know, solid documentation of where we are, what we're supposed to be doing in, um, in every class, in every, every class, every grade level. So, um, those things together, I think, are going to help us improve our writing skills. Um, our IAR scores were still not that great, and we want to see that really improve over these three years. Then our second one, uh, goal is our culture goal, and it's to continue working on our, uh, middle school methodologies and our middle school assessments. So, we're gonna continue to take what we learned from the AMLA assessment and last year's Five Essential Survey, um, to try to become that most, most, uh, successful middle school. So, um, we're going to be going through, continuing to go through all those assessment pieces and trying to address those in the teams. Most of those things are, you know, structural things that we're gonna be doing within the teams, um, to help the students be more successful at the junior high. Uh, one of the areas, uh, that we're gonna be working on is transitions between the, the grade levels, between the schools. So, we'll be working within the schools to go from sixth to seventh, seventh to eighth. And then, we also, we already do a pretty decent job of going from, um, Mokina Junior High to Lincoln Way High School, Leekway Central, and we want to try and go down, um, to MIS and do a better job of, of coordinating so the kids, the teachers, and everybody understands expectations as we go from grade to grade to grade. So, those are our two goals.
Questions?
Yeah, no, that was all, everybody did, and actually, we bought, uh, I bought a copy of the new book, uh, for everybody just before I went out, and I'm going, they don't know this yet, but I'm going to, uh, talk to all of them about that. Uh, they, they all got a, uh, I wanna kind of get them up to speed and, and share with them the results of our study as well.
All right. That concludes my portion of my report.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Cohen? Well, okay, next up, Dr. Spencer.
Good evening. Uh, my September board report this month started out with highlights of the professional learning that has taken place in the month of September for the district. I included a summary and highlights of our early release day last week and the events that took place at each building. Um, this week, I have been attending two state-level directors' meetings for the state of Illinois. I just got back a little bit ago from Springfield for the Title I Director State Meeting, and I'm headed out in the morning to Rosemont for the bilingual directors' meeting. Um, so, getting a lot of good information on updates to rules and regulations and research related to those different areas that I oversee for the district. Um, our math teachers at the intermediate building in the junior high will be taking part in a full day of professional learning next week for each building, focused on the next layer of professional development in support of implementation of Eureka Math Squared. So, we're really looking forward to that day together. Our instructional coaches and principal team will ta- take part in a training this Friday um, regarding some support in working and coaching teams, as well as ways to kick off coaching in a new school year. Um, I provided some information as well about our October institute that's coming up here very quickly. Uh, last year, we had our full-day institute in February. This year, we are having it in October to allow for a little bit more time for implementation of the ideas that are learned, um, at this session. I did provide for you a, um, session catalog that highlights the different sessions that will be offered to our teachers. Just like last year, the teachers will have the opportunity to choose the sessions that they feel best aligned to their personal goals or the needs that they see in their students. Um, so, teachers will have the chance to sign up for those next week. Um, and you're more than welcome to join us. If there's something on here that, um, catches your eye, just let me know, and I can let you know where that will be. Um, we'd love to have you join if you're able to. Our paraprofessionals will also have sessions available to them based on their feedback around de-escalation techniques and CPR training, so that will also be available for them as well. I did provide for you an update regarding the beginning of the year implementation of our new instructional programs in the district, including ninety-five percent, um, group phonics, our Eureka Math Squared, and Project Lead the Way. Um, so, if you haven't had a chance, please read that, because it does provide some information regarding the fantastic work that our teachers have done in jumping right in to implement and to plan and to learn a new program, and especially to teach it for the first time in their classroom. So, I can't say thank you enough and show my gratitude enough for our teachers for learning something new. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of planning. It's a lot of collaborating, and they have done just a fantastic job, um, getting, getting right into it at the start of the school year. The other components that I provided, um, some information for you is our K-5 ELA committee is coming back together um, this school year to complete our ELA programming and materials adoption in the areas of comprehension, vocabulary, writing, and grammar. We will be meeting together for the first We will be meeting together for the first time next week, and at this meeting, we're going to review, I'd ask for feedback from all staff members. So we'll be review, reviewing the feedback from all staff members, putting together a rubric um and talking about our goals for the year as our first kind of step into the work um that will take place from now till the spring. Our hope is that we'll bring to you um a recommendation in March regarding which um program we'd like to move forward with with implementation next school year. I did provide a little bit of information as well regarding um handwriting pilot that our teachers at M E S are taking place in in grade second and third. Over the summer, we went to order their handwriting books and they no longer make them. Um, so we had to um do a little bit of research to see what was out there and what was best aligned to some of the work happening in the lower grade levels. And um I was able to present that information to our teachers at the start of the year. So they are going to pilot a Zener blow, Zener blows or handwriting, um printing with a transition to cursive in second grade, and then third grade's main focus is cursive handwriting. Um, so they're gonna give that a try this year, and then if all goes well, we'll bring that to you um for a recommendation for a formal adoption for next school year. The last piece I have for you, fifth grade is requesting a novel be added to the fifth grade novel list over at M I S. Uh, the novel being requested is Restart by Gordon Corman. I provided a little bit of information for you about what that novel is. Um, and per our board policy, it will be on display at district office for thirty days if you, community members or teachers would like to take a look at it. Any questions for me?
Questions for Dr. Johnson?
No.
Very good.
I'm excited that
It was here, it was here. Um, but yeah, so now a newer updated, you know, program for the students to engage with, with the teachers, so. Yep.
Okay, next up is Mr. Rooney.
I'd like to start by thanking the uh illustrious uh preschool for all team in the back of the room. I work with them rather closely. Um, it's an amazing start for any of our students uh here in school. Our preschool team is uh the beginning of our obligation for child find um to find any child in the community who may have a disability, and uh they really live and breathe the importance of finding children early, providing services early, and providing them with very high-quality services. So I just personally, my heart, thank you so much. Um, and I'm so glad the state gave you the, the circle of gold quality that you deserve. So um. Other good news, um, so the state picks um indicators. We, we report lots of fine pieces of data to the state of Illinois through what is called the I star system. Um, so every time we have an I E P, we have all these different codes, and my executive assistant, who is amazing, Luann Lotus, she uploads all this data. The state number crunches that data and they keep track of various indicators to see if we're meeting our goals and the state's goals in terms of special education. Uh, very happy to report that the areas that they were monitoring last year, early childhood outcomes, thank you again, early childhood team. Um, secondary outcomes, which are transition plans, and that is uh definitely Natalie Pughfall, our eighth-grade teacher over at M J H. Suspension expulsion, thank you principals for not suspending or expelling students. Um, disproportionality, child find and timely correction of non-compliance. So I wanna thank everyone in the special education department for having your part of making sure that we're compliant with all of those indicators. Um, last year, uh, we were uh provided with an additional eighty-four thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars tied to the S R funds um specifically for uh special education. We are allowed to use this funding in the same way that we use our regular flow-through I D E A funds. Um, last year, we identified that we had high level of social emotional needs here at Mokina Elementary School. We are continuing to see that high need here. So um, we are going to provide um an additional two days a week support uh in regards to social work to assist with those students who require um more social emotional support from the building. Uh, and lastly, since I wrote this report, I have, uh, I'm in the process of onboarding two more paraprofessionals. And so we are almost actually fully staffed, which is a really great place to be. It's been hard to get here, um, but we're, we are so close, we're almost there. So does anyone have any questions for me?
Questions? Um, moving on then to Dr.
All right. Good evening. Just uh uh on my report, we've got a couple of information items that uh are in there with the intergovernmental agreement with New Lennox for transportation. So that's just kind of an overflow if it's for an activity or a weekend activity. If, if their primary provider doesn't have the capacity to transport, we would be a backup. And then there's information about the P F A classrooms to do a renovation in those P F A classrooms. That's an information item in there. And so we've got uh the action item for tonight is the budget. So we had our budget hearing and then asking for approval for our budget. And until we get that uh formal board-approved budget, some of the information and graphs that you usually see from me, once those budget numbers are updated to our software with the uh board-approved budget, we'll have those again next month. A little bit of update on our projects, the M J parking lot is complete. Dr. Rollinitis, five years in the making, we finally got your parking lot done. And then we've got the uh M E S, M I S uh concrete. That project has been complete. We've got a little bit of uh issue with the grass growing around that concrete, but other than that, it looks pretty good. And then projects that we've got uh asking for action tonight are the electrical panels. We have our bids back, so we've got electrical panel bids to be approved tonight. And then we also talked about an issued, board-approved issuing an R F P for the south area unit vents in the uh January, February. And because of supply chain issues, we didn't go forward with that, but now we're ready to go forward with that and just putting it out again to have uh for transparency and information to ask again for the approval for that R F P for those uh unit vents and have that work done in summer of twenty-three. And the projects that we've got in progress, we've got the S three project here, which is also downstairs in the south area, but it is in the common area. And then we are in the process of taking a look at the M J chiller. So we first, what you first saw was two, three, or a three hundred and seventy-five ton chiller replacement. So we also have asked for an alternate bid to take a look at two two-hundred-ton chillers and use that uh uh similar to the design that's actually here at M E S with two two-hundred-ton chillers. That bid opening is due on September twenty-ninth. What we've also seen is a, you know, and today too, a giant leap in interest rates. So I gave everybody a little look at my board report about what our interest income has been in the past. We've had similar types of interest rates. We had a pretty high number in interest rate revenue that we haven't seen for a few years. Twenty-one was low, twen, and we don't have our audit results from twenty-two, but that number's gonna be low. And this year, twenty-three, we'll start and see some increase in it. And then as we go forward with interest rates being what they are, we may see uh, you know, substantial increase in interest income. That's my, that's my report.
Questions for Dr. Shaw?
Well, from an interest income standpoint, it's a good news, and um I, I highly doubt the Fed is done, so they're, they're gonna go higher.
Evening. We're gonna be talking about cybersecurity today. Uh, if you haven't heard, the Los Angeles School District, which is the second-largest K twelve district in the United States, uh spread across thirty-one municipalities, I believe they have well over half a million students in the district. They had a cyber event over Labor Day weekend. Uh, this is according to the Guardian, fifty-seven percent of ransomware attacks reported to the F B I in August and September in twenty-twenty-one were K twelve schools. Um, that number always seems to be increasing from prior years. And so I'd like to talk about a little bit of things that we have in place. Uh, the first one is Know Before. Know Before allows your district to send out targeted phishing attacks against their staff in order to train them to know what to look for malicious emails. The platform also comes with a library of cybersecurity trainings. Um, end-users are the largest security vector in any organization. The staff just completed the Know Before Phishing Awareness Training and how to report it to, to Google Mail. Um, in the report below, uh, this test, the picture uh is from May. The blue lines are normal, informational green is good, red is not, not desirable. The base test line, uh, the base test was before training occurred, right? So this is normal, and I'll, I'll explain the numbers for people that don't see the picture. Uh, the email, the phishing campaign included a hundred and ninety-three recipients. Hundred and ninety-one received the email, a hundred and seventy-two people actually opened the email. Uh, sixty people clicked the link inside of the email and forty-two people entered data from the website that was opened, and only one person reported it as a phishing uh, a phishing scheme successfully. Um, don't get discouraged. That was, that's normal. That was before training. Okay? Things are, things are looking better. In the future, I'll share with you the results, but I can already tell you we look way better than the baseline. Uh, can't share with you the current things going on right now, um, cuz it's not done yet. So uh, we also use CrowdStrike, CrowdStrike Complete, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five monitoring um from their Security Operations Center because most targeted attacks infiltrate systems and lay dormant until weekends and holidays, right? That goes in back, back to what happened with Los Angeles. Uh, it allows for more times for a, attack to propagate. So with the CrowdStrike Complete, um, when the twenty-four-seven monitoring, I believe they average under a half hour for a resolution. Um, in our case, that, that's great. Uh, they usually either have two things in place that either they, they figure out if this happening or an event is something that they will call me first and then take action or take action and then call me about it. So just to make sure it's complete. They also have a team that um they threat hunt and they stay active and learn what's going on in the community to be able to update their software. The last thing we have uh in place is two-factor authentication or multi-factor authentication, it's called, is used uh for more than one, a single method to prove who you are. In our case, we use authentication by knowledge, something we know, which is, which is password, and authentication uh by possession, which is something we have. In most cases, it's a cell phone for two-factor authentication. If both of those are true, you can get in. We have it enabled for Google and ClassLink. And so why is that important? Um, we go by the defense-in-depth system here, devices, software and training, create multiple layers of security in case one layer fails, hopefully another la, layer will prevent the attack. In this case, devices would be the two F A checkbox, software would be CrowdStrike and training would be KnowBefore. That concludes my report. No questions?
Questions for Mr. Henson?
Well, I, I just have, I don't know if it's a question or a, a comment, but um, you know, I, I think most of you know, but I, I look at a bank and, and we have phishing audits, e, exams on a, on a regular basis, multiple, multiple times a year. Um, I, I get at least one phishing attempt um email every day. Um, some are very good, some are awful, and you can detect them right away, but there are some really good hackers out there. Um, and one thing, you know, bank, obviously, they're looking for financial information, things like that, but one of the things that I, I've learned from our cybersecurity folks that when they talk about us, one of the big hot topics right now that these hackers are, is student data. They want the student information. They want social security numbers. They, that, once they get they can use it for nefarious things, bad things. It proves the, obviously, the fact that, you know, that's what they're looking for. They're not, you know, addresses, if you can get that from a hacking attempt, they, they can do a lot of damage. Um, it's very important. A lot of bad there that, that are, are trying to get this information. It's all over the place, not to, it's, it's all over. So just please, please be cognizant of, you know, what you click on. Um, and I'm sure you, you've told us all it, but you know, the easiest thing is kinda hover on that email address and see where it's coming from. A lot of times these hacking attempts are coming from these crazy email addresses that they're not Hotmail, Gmail. They're crazy things that you just know that, okay, this is bad. So just please be cognizant of that. I, i, it's out there everywhere.
Okay, it was then. Two personality products. So Mr. McAtee, I believe you will go first this month?
Twice in one board meeting. Um, not much, uh, in addition to my uh written reports. Um, we do have uh swell of the clubs up and running. Um, we have Rocket Runners. We've been out there for a couple of weeks. Our student council was just uh elected last week, had the first meeting. Um, we have our P B S ambassadors who are getting started next week. I'm starting my stem club, which we have eighty kids registered for, so things are back to normal, and it's, it's wonderful to see uh enough kids getting involved in the enable computer, sitting next to something. So it's, it's great to have it all back to normal. Um. This is wonderful. We back in the building, staff's been great. We all have staff. Um, it's been a wonderful start to the school year.
Okay. Any questions for Mr.? Okay, Dr. Lawrence?
Again, my thirty-plus years I've ever been so excited about a parking lot in my life. Um, have it done. It looks really nice. I don't, if you haven't been by there, they did it. The landscaping really just made everything fantastic, the bushes, the trees. It's uh, it's, it looks really nice over there. So thank you, everyone, and I think it's been a long time coming. Boy, is it gonna be nice. And we, we did use it already at the back-to-school night, um, and it got filled up just like we expected. Uh, but it did relieve a lot of the pressure from people parking in the streets and, and all that. So looking forward to it for some of our band concerts and those activities. Those usually, we fill it up and then some, so we're look, uh, excited to see how that's gonna work out. Um. I think I would be remiss if I did not mention that we have some people who went to state. Uh, we, we have two young ladies, Sophie DeBries and Taylor Bush, who went to state in golf in our new golf program. Fantastic. Um. Taylor shot eight, she got eight, right? So she got eight. That's pretty awesome. So first year of a program like that, and we already had some, we already went and made a dent in state. Um, no feel, uh, file, I don't know, I would say that wrong. Um, he missed going to state by one stroke, one stroke. And he didn't know it until afterwards, boy, that one putt, you know? Um, but he missed it by one stroke, but they did, the boys did a great job too. So new program, always nice to see success right out of the gate. Um, it's a program that it's gonna be fun and, and we're gonna build. Um, Mr. Munch and I got to golf with the kids uh just before uh they went down to state, and it was a lot of fun. I think it was fun for them to see how bad we are and um, but just to go out there and, and be with them. Um, I will put one out as well, boys ba, baseball is doing really well. They won the regional tournament the other day. Um, sectionals this Saturday against Summit Hill, at Summit Hill at eleven. So you're looking for some fun baseball, uh, go give that a shot. So congratulations to the, the boys team. Um. Most everything else I had in my uh, my report, but I do wanna point out that our, our, this is Bruce, our maintenance man's a grandpa. So congratulations to Bruce. He's been waiting a long time, and he is very happy, and that little girl will be wrapped around, or he will be wrapped around that little girl's finger in no time. So um, I think that's all I have to add.
Any questions for Dr. Rollinitis? I just have one comment. When you did golf with the players, um, Tay, Taylor was smiling from ear to ear coming home after she beat both coaches and both administrators. She was pretty pumped uh about that. Um.
Great job. Yeah. It's a lot of fun. I'm so happy we had that program and um, I mean, I'd go play baseball with the kids if I could, but I don't think it's more appropriate for me to play golf.
Uh, next up is Lincoln Way Special Education.
Well, just on behalf of Mrs. Trolley, I know she can't be here tonight, she's listening, but um, I did wanna thank the kindergarten teachers as well as the eighth-grade team for the reinstatement of the Kinder Buddies Program last week. Um. So this is my third year in Mokina. It's my, was my first time seeing it because we didn't have it for the last couple of years, and um, you know, as the, the kindergartners are filing into their tables, um, the buses arrived in, in the front of the building, and the eighth graders got the first set of doors, the second set of doors was locked, and so I opened the doors and then watched them all walk in, and the, the expressions on their faces as they walked back into their elementary school commons and sat down, it was just, it was adorable. And um, you know, watching the eighth graders read to the kindergarteners, and when their eighth graders were leaving, there were a few very, very sad uh little kiddos. You, you, you had a real prior of the child. We're very sad to see the Kinder Buddies leave. Um, so it, it's just wonderful to have that program back, and you know, for the eighth graders to have them, have somebody look up to them. It's just a really neat program for them, social emotionally, for them to have the responsibility of being that little ment, that mentor to that little kindergarten friend. So. of being that little ment- that mentor to that little kindergarten friend, so. Um, I just want to make sure that that got enough airtime today, because that was a great experience, I'm really excited for October.
Hey, Anna.
District eight forty-three, we did some, we did a lot of uh approving, the amended uh, we approved the amended administrative contracts of benefits. Uh, we approved Burch Agency Agreement Omni Therapeutics and we um approved the addition of Transportation Office Support decisions. We also um did approval on a few intergovernmental agreements, we did moments, district number one. We approved for Flossmore District one, one sixty-one, uh, K A S C. I forgot what that stands for, K A S E C. Intergovernmental key district.
Area.
Okay. Okay, we approved that one and then Plainfield District two oh two, Homewood-Flossmore District two thirty-three. Um, and. Be. Not, yeah, it is, it's why we put with any other lenses and stuff, so next month we'll approve the budget. Well, or next week, I should say, and that's all I got.
Any questions for Ann? Okay, we had one failure request, I believe it was completed. Okay, excellent, all right. Next up is action requests. We'll start with uh approval on the previous minutes.
I move to approve the minutes on August tenth, twenty twenty-two, regular and closed session meetings as presented.
Second.
By Lisa, any discussion, please call the vote.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Staley?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, next up is district bills, Lisa had them listening?
I did have them this month. And thank you, Dr. Shaw, for calling me this day afternoon and talking to me with them about them. Um, questions were asked and answered by Dr. Shaw. So I move to approve the monthly bills as presented.
Second.
So by Anna, any discussion, please call the vote.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Staley?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes. Next up is uh personnel.
I move to approve personnel recommendations seven C, one through seven as presented, subject to successful background check if applicable.
Second by Jamie, any discussion, please call the vote.
Mrs. Staley?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, next up is the consent agenda.
I move to approve consent agenda items seven D, one through four as presented.
Okay, we have somebody, Anna, in discussion, please call the vote.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yeah.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Staley?
My motion was incorrect.
That's okay, we'll get to it, we'll fix it.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, motion passed, so next up is seven D five. The MES MIS electrical panels.
I move to approve. Item seven D five as presented.
Second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion, please call the vote on Anna.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yeah.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Staley?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, next up is the budget adoption, I move that the Board of Education approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget as presented.
Second.
Oh, wow, all right, Mike, with those, Mike, uh, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yeah.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Staley?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, budget's approved, Dr. Shaw, there you go. Get those graphs going. All right, next up is MES self-area uni- unit ventilators, wow, sorry, it's.
I move to approve issuing a second RFP for the MES generator replacement project.
By Lisa, any discussion? On the vote.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Staley?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Next up is MCSA professional negotiations agreement between two through twenty twenty-four.
I move to approve the MCSA.
Do that to me.
Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four.
Second. Any discussion?
Mr. Bush?
Point order, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Agreement.
Ready to redo them?
Yeah.
Um, sure, Anna, did you do the motion, can you re- say it with the?
Uh, I move to approve MCSA professional negotiating agreement, twenty-two through twenty twenty-five. Second.
Mr. Robert Stone, second bit, any uh discussion?
Okay, Mr. um, I had the privilege of serving on that uh negotiating committee and uh appreciate all the time and effort that the the district staff um uh put into it and similarly the uh MCSA uh team as well. Um, but the uh, the uh end agreement is pretty fair and hopefully uh it'll sit as well over the next three years.
Discussion? Kathy, please call the vote.
Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Staley?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, congratulations to all the MCSA staff members. Uh, next up is the substitute paraprofessional pay rate increase.
I move to approve the substitute paraprofessional pay rate increase agenda.
Second.
Second by Lisa, any discussions, please call the vote.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
Mrs. Staley?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yeah.
Mr. Bush?
Yes, motion passed. Okay, next up is items for the October nineteenth agenda. Let's include out some stuff, Dr. Shaw, I believe you're going to have a few items um on there.
We uh anticipate having action items for the um intergovernmental agreements. We should have the bid results back from the MJ chiller. Um, we may, we will see what we find out on the PFA classrooms and you'll see, not an action item, but first look at level eighty-one and twenty-two. Oh, and we will have the auditors here next month, so you'll have the approval of the audit and a presentation from Waterbuck and Alman, our auditors.
Okay. Uh, for the good of Mokena.
Can I go back to that? Um, sorry, uh, enrollment numbers, we'll have those. School year enrollment.
Sorry, anything else for October agenda? Okay, here and then, for the good of Mokena, anything?
For the good of Mokena, the for the good of Mokena, October second is having pancake breakfast for the Lions at the Mokena Fire Department from seven thirty to twelve at Station One. And then on October eighth is the trivia night at the Mokena BSW for Mokena Miracles and that is at seven o'clock. Okay, at seven o'clock on October eighth. And you can purchase your tables online through Mokena Miracle's website. It's for the good of Mokena, love that.
Yeah, it's good, that's good, it's all good, anything else? No? Okay. With that, then I'm education adjourned to a closed session for the purposes of personnel.
Second.
Second by Mr. Everett, any discussion, please call the vote.
Mrs. Staley?
Yes.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Mrs. Zalinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Briscoe?
Yeah.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Riddell?
Yes.
And most thanks, thank you everyone for coming, have a safe night.
Thank you.